I would like to call to order the special meeting and work session of the Newport News School Board for Monday, March 4th, 2024. On behalf of the members of the school board and superintendent, I welcome each of you present and/or watching. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with a pledge to the flag. Ms. Ammon, would you please do the honors? Thank you, and you may be seated. I want to begin by thanking our board members for being able to prioritize this evening since we moved it from tomorrow night to tonight. So thank each one of you for being able to be present. We will move on to 2.01, the proposed FY 2025 operating budget. I am going to turn it over to Dr. Mitchell and her team.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the school board. Our mission is to ensure that all of our students matriculate through Newport News Public Schools and graduate college career and citizen-ready. The proposed 2025 fiscal year budget presents the financial picture that actualizes our mission. The theme this year is staying the course, keeping a steady focus on our priorities. The proposed budget supports Journey 2025, the strategic plan, and the Newport News Public Schools Profile of a Learner, which is designed to ensure that our students are leaders, emotionally intelligent, academically prepared, resilient, innovators, equity-minded, and reflective. The proposed spending plan prioritizes funding to continue our collective commitments in nine areas to support and advance our students. We will continue to focus on accelerated learning, student attendance, student and staff supports, family and community engagement, school and building safety, technology supports, professional development in the areas of leadership and instruction, staff recruitment and retention, and of course, operations and maintenance. And investing in our students is vital to ensure that they learn, grow, and graduate college career and citizen-ready. At this time, Scarlett Minto, our Chief Financial Officer, will review the proposed operating budget for the fiscal year 2025. Thank you, Ms. Minto.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Co-Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Mitchell. I am pleased to present the superintendent's proposed budget for fiscal year 25. I would like to start this presentation out by first reviewing our budget process. As you can see from this outline, this budget process required a lot of communications and collaboration. November to December, budget staff met with department and senior management to discuss budget expectations for the upcoming year. The goal of this process is to be strategic in the planning by targeting our resources to the areas of greatest need. In January to February, we communicated our needs with the school board, the city and community advisory groups to establish our priorities in alignment with our division's strategic plan, Journey 25, and to address funding gaps. This evening, we present the superintendent's proposed budget to the school board, and after final approval later this month, we submit a school board proposed budget to the city council for consideration. The city council must generally approve an annual education budget by March 15th. As Dr. Mitchell said, these are fiscal year 25 operating budget will support the goals envisioned set by the school district's strategic plan, and we will stay the course, but we have to start with how much funding we're going to get. This slide shows the governor's proposed budget for fiscal year 2025. The governor is proposing a 0% raise in fiscal year 25, a 2% raise in '26, and a 1% bonus in '25 effective July 1st. Based on the governor's proposed budget comparing revenue projections from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25, Newport News Schools will receive an additional $1.7 million in state revenue. This chart shows our state funding trend from 2009. We see a consistent climb from the Great Recession period with the governor's proposed budget for fiscal year '25 showing a nearly fat, flat funding trend. The proposed state revenue for fiscal year '25 is based on enrollment of 25,290 students is projected to be $257.9 million, which is, like I said, an increase of 1.7 million. This slide shows the funding and support from the city without debt service. Debt service is the payment and interest on the debt the city encourages to fund their capital needs. The superintendent has requested the city provide $3.5 million in increase in operating funds for fiscal year '25 to support our increased needs in salaries and benefits, and to allow us to stay the course with initiatives such as addressing security, accelerated learning, attendance, student wellness, and mental health support. When the city speaks about funding the school division, they include debt service as part of that funding, so I wanted to show that here. The blue bar is the operating funding, and the yellow bar is the debt service the city has taken out on the division's behalf for our capital needs, and it's referred to as debt service. So when we combine the debt service, the city has taken out on the school division's behalf for capital needs, plus the support the school division operational budget. You see for fiscal year '25, a city revenue projection, a total of $130.3 million in support for Newport News Schools from the city's general fund. An additional $3.5 million from the city would take us from $119.6 million in fiscal year '24 to $123.1 in fiscal year '25. The amount of revenue we receive from the state and the city will drive what we will be able to accomplish with their budget. The revenue information will change as the governor approves the budget and the city council considers the superintendent's funding request. This is our current revenue projection for fiscal year '25, and it totals $386.6 million, and this includes the state increase of 1.7 million and the city request of 3.5 million. We are not expecting any meaningful change in our federal funding, which includes impact aid or other revenue, which includes fees, athletic, stuff like that, stop-arm camera, those sort of things fall under other revenue, for a total of $5.2 million and change from fiscal year '24. Accurate enrollment projections are critical to the budget process because most state funding is based on per-pupil basis, and a majority of staffing is based on our enrollment. For example, the number of students will help us determine how many teachers we need. Our enrollment continues to trend down. We have lost an additional 194 students thus far this fiscal year as compared to fiscal year '24 enrollment projection. However, I'm going to share with you, our student subgroups are showing an increased enrollment trend. The first subgroup, pre-K, we are projecting an additional 77 students. The state provides funding for our pre-K program, and that is described as Virginia Preschool Initiative. Our English language learner enrollment is expected to also increase next year. We are projecting an additional 201 students. We have seen continued growth in this group, and the state also projects continued growth in this group. For our special education subgroup, we are anticipating 74 additional special education students as more students are going through the eligibility process than in previous And of course, we have our military-connected students. Current projections are showing a loss of an additional 435 military-connected students as we move into fiscal year '25. However, we are still reviewing the impact aid cards until June 30th for this number to trend back up. The superintendent's proposed fiscal year '25 budget totals $386.6 million and represents the fiscal support needed to achieve the mission and expectations articulated in the school district's strategic plan, Journey 2025. And now we will take a look at how this spending plan is tied to our strategic plan, beginning with student success. Besides highly qualified staff, educating students requires academic supports. The superintendent's proposed budget recommends maintaining their investment in software, online educational materials, curriculum supports to assist our students in learning content and mastery skills for their success. For fiscal year '25, we estimated an ongoing cost of $3.4 million to the operating budget to maintain the student's success toolkit. Attendance is an important factor in student achievement. We continue to encourage better attendance for all our students and provide interventions designed to remove any barriers to attendance for our students. For fiscal year '25, we want to continue to prioritize the funding of attendance staff to prevent unnecessary delays and interventions needed to ensure students' attendance issues are addressed in a timely fashion. The projected cost to maintain these specialized staff is $1 million in fiscal year '25. Another key to ensuring student success lies with our BASE program, which is our short-term intervention program for students in kindergarten through third grade who have engaged in behaviors that impact their academic progress with the general education environment. BASE staff address these behaviors by providing social, emotional, and empowerment strategies. They teach students how to identify and process their emotions in a healthy way. They are developing effective interventions and strategies based on behavioral data collection. They provide transition plans to assist in student return to their home school, as well as connecting students and their families with additional resources. The increase in cost to our budget is $300,000. Moving on to student and staff wellness, promoting an environment of social, emotional, and physical well-being remains a top priority. Since August of '23, student support specialists and mental health therapists have provided a combined 7,642 student contacts. The superintendent's proposed budget recommends maintaining staffing to provide this level of intensive targeted mental health support and diagnoses to address social and emotional health. The school division employs more mental health and behavior support than is required by the Virginia Standards of Quality. We currently have 170 FTEs, school counselors, school social workers, psychologists, student support specialists, clinical mental health therapists, behavior coaches. And we also want to continue our athletics program, and we will need some material supplies and uniforms to continue to do that, and so the total for these things is $12 million. Youth development supports student and staff wellness. In fiscal year '24, we added a youth development specialist and additional clerical support. In fiscal year '25, we want to maintain this investment that has reached the lives of over 11,000 students who participate in youth development programs. Two important initiatives are listed here: maintaining dedicated school-based support staff who support social, emotional, and physical well-being for our students, and maintenance of our gun violence prevention programs for our most vulnerable students. Investment in this initiative is $200,000. Employee expertise remains a priority. The superintendent's recommended budget provides $730,000 to continue to provide staff with innovative, professional learning opportunities, provide employee tuition reimbursement opportunities, supports for career advancement training, and continue to focus on staff development. And of course, employee compensation remains a very high priority. Faced with a national teacher shortage means paying competitively, even more important to enable us to attract and retain the most qualified teachers to work with their students. This chart shows teacher salary comparisons with their peer school divisions in Hampton Roads. The top chart is teachers on the bachelor scale, and the bottom is their teachers on the master scale. Newport News Public Schools is highlighted in yellow. You can see it going across. Beginning on the left side of the chart, for staff under five years of experience is where we still need to work to remain competitive, both at the bachelor's and master's education levels. For bachelor scale, our current starting pay is $52,710, and you will note that we have some school divisions who are above that for their starting pay. And this is something we would like to increase to remain competitive. But as you can see from these comparisons, we remain very competitive with other education and experience levels, five years and up to 30. We continue to struggle with bus driver shortages as well. This salary comparison shows we have come a long way in our efforts to remain competitive with our peers. While our minimum rate is just slightly below some of our peers at $20.16 an hour, the majority of our drivers are very experienced and make considerably more than just the hourly rate. This slide shows five other support staff groups whose salaries we continue to monitor. This includes custodians, child nutrition workers, instructional assistants, security officers, and nurses. For fiscal year '24, you can see we continue to be very competitive in all these support groups as we compare to our peer school divisions. We're like, looking really good. The superintendent's proposed budget continues to make compensation a priority to ensure we can attract and retain the most qualified staff. The superintendent's proposed budget recommends a general staff increase of 2%, maintaining the teacher scale with 1.5% between steps for years 1 through 30, increase in teacher starting pay to $53,000 a year, and as funding permits, provides support staff compression adjustments. As I shared earlier, the governor's proposed budget does not include a raise for fiscal year '25, but recommends a 1% bonus. The governor has stated it is acceptable to use the revenue allocated to the bonus for a salary increase instead. Another strategic goal tied to the superintendent's proposed budget is enhanced partnerships. Our family and community engagement initiative remains an important part of our plan to ensure students are successful. As you see on this slide, these folks provide some very important supports, including connecting families to available resources such as food, clothing, shelter, housing, healthcare, and connecting families to the school community through focused engagement activities and empowerment programming. To maintain these resources, we have allocated $2 million in the fiscal year 2025 budget The Journey 2025 goal to be good stewards of our resources includes maintaining safe and secure workplaces, campus, and schools, maintaining one-to-one student-computer ratio, and the associated network infrastructure for all our students and staff, to maintain a safe internet environment for our students and staff, and maintain the operations and maintenance of our buildings. As you can see here, the safety for students and staff is remaining a priority. We are projecting $7.7 million in ongoing costs for this initiative in fiscal year '25. The security function has 125 full-time employees, 114 of them are security officers. This list represents the majority of the actions that have been taken to provide students and staff a safe and secure environment to learn and work. Some of them will not require additional funding in fiscal year '25, but it shows the dedication and focus of resources required to provide a safe and secure environment for our students and staff. These are new building and campus safety items requested for fiscal year '25, including ballistic window treatments for all school for select windows and doors, elevator replacements for Demby High School and Gildersleeve Middle School, landscape services with safety in mind, PA and clock replacements, and additional security cameras that total $3.7 million. Operations and maintenance of our school buildings and campuses remains a priority in this spending plan. The center graphic highlights some of the impacts investing in operations and maintenance supports have on our students, teachers, and other staff, as well as the life cycles of our facilities. Currently, it's taking a minimum of $13.3 million in non-personnel expenditures to maintain these facilities. That includes things like utilities, pest control, electrical, stormwater management, roof repairs, carpentry, and flooring. New requests in operations include carpentry, casework at Y H Elementary, electrical switch gear at Woodside and Heritage High School, flooring replacement at Woodside High School, Gildersleeve and Washington Middle School, also flooring at Hilton Elementary, some HVAC controls, landscape equipment replacements, paving services, blacktops, parking lots, bus slots, sidewalk repair, plumbing needs, restroom renovation at Todd Stadium, and roof renovation at Sandra's Elementary for a total of $4.7 million. Good stewards of resources include supporting the Journey 2025 technology plan. Currently, 100% of our students have access to a computing device. This provides all students to have equal learning opportunities to learn anywhere, anytime. The superintendent's proposed budget includes an ongoing investment in staffing, network supports, and replacement equipment of $4.9 million. New technology requests include auditorium system replacements, sound system replacements, instructional technology coach and staff computer refresh, and student computer replacements to support our one-to-one initiative. This is a list of other supports requested for fiscal year '25. For athletics, fencing in high school scoring tables. Health and PE needs playground equipment for General, Stanford, and Jenkins Elementary. And transportation has requested child restraints for buses and white fleet replacements. For fiscal year '25, we do have some staffing requests. Excuse me. Something's getting me. During our budget planning process, we have identified 18 positions funded by grants that we need to fund now and operate as the grant support is ending. So it's eight family engagement specialists to ensure we have support at all elementary and middle school, and 10 technical support specialists to ensure we are able to properly support our classroom one-to-one technology. We will repurpose vacant positions and associate funding to have a net increase to the operating budget. Thank you. Moving on to benefits. Another part of our employee compensation is health benefits. This graph shows our claims cost per member increasing annually. For fiscal year '25, we expect an increase to just over 13%. This is a current projection, but as claims data comes in for this planned year, we will be able to fine-tune these numbers prior to our 2025 planned year open enrollment, and we also will be reviewing our health plan options to ensure we have the best plan designed to keep these costs down for both the school board and the employee. Based on the current projections, we are recommending employee share in the projected increase of $2.4 million, the same amount as we're doing for '24, which would be an individual increase of $5 to $7.64 a month, or a family increase between $22, $28 to $30.70 a month. This is our operating budget revenue by source. Over 98% of the revenue is received from our two largest funding partners, the City of Newport News and the Commonwealth. For fiscal year '25, 66.7% or $257.9 million, and revenue is state funding and 31.8% or $123.1 million is local funding. The majority of federal funds in the operating budget are from federal impact aid, just under 1%. Other revenue is projected to be $2.5 million and includes indirect costs, excuse me, summer school tuition, out-of-school district tuition, self-tower leases, rebates, sale of surplus equipment, driver's ed classes, receipts from athletic events. Those are the sort of things that we have under other revenue, which is $2.5 million. These are our operating expenditures. Teacher and support staff salaries and benefits are the most expensive elements of any school division budget, and the majority of this budget is needed to cover these costs, with salaries and benefits making up $337.8 million, or 87% of the superintendent's proposed budget, and $48.8 million, or 13% for all non-personnel-related expenses. This visual is the operating budget by function, and as you would expect, instructional services is the largest part of our budget, 70.8% for fiscal year '25. The next biggest slice, 10.7% or $41.4 million, is operation and maintenance, which includes plant services, custodial services, security, and warehouse services. Technology is $17.4 million, or 4.5%. This is our staffing breakdown for fiscal year '25. 49% or $1,910.2 of a budget at FTE for fiscal year '25 is teachers, and that's represented in the dark blue. 6.6% or $257 budgeted full-time employees are instructional assistants. Transportation staff, including bus drivers, equals 12.1% or 470 positions, leaving 10.8% for custodial, maintenance, and security staff. Other professionals are 11.6% and include nurses, school counselors, media specialists, psychologists, technology ITCs. For a total of $3,895.6 full-time employees, and this is a reduction of 9.8 positions as compared to fiscal year '24. This visual shows how the superintendent's proposed budget is allocated to support strategic plan, Journey 2025. The largest part of this spending plan is allocated to support student success, $242.4 million, or 62.7%. And stewardship of resources, which includes support staff support such as equipment, contracts, and services needed to support instruction, is $84.4 million, or 21.8% of the FY '25 spending plan. And now to balancing the superintendent's proposed budget. Balancing the budget entailed some review of the teacher staffing allocations with new enrollment information, projecting staff turnover and attrition for fiscal year '25, assuming benefit premium adjustments will be made as needed, identifying increases and decreases in needs by evaluating our priorities, what can wait, what cannot wait, repurposing vacant or underutilized full-time positions with the intent of absorbing staffing changes. We also needed to balance the budget with additional support and cash capital from the city. So looking at this graph, on the right side, expense categories also increase and decrease. Personnel, a 2% increase for all staff is $5.6 million. Adding eight family engagement specialists and 10 technology specialists is $1.4 million. Reduction in 27 teacher positions associated with lower enrollment will save $2.3 million. Increase in health plan cost to the school board estimated to be $2.4 million. Health plan cost reductions, if we should pass on some of this to the employees, would be minus $400,000. Our city pension has increased $1.5 million due to the retirements. OPEB claims are down. We project a $300,000 savings now. Virginia retirement premium is expected to decrease slightly to save us about $900,000. Moving to non-personnel, a savings of $1.6 million in contract services, an increase to New Horizons of $200,000, an estimated increase for fuel and utilities of $300,000, education materials, $500,000, estimated savings in turnover and attrition, $5.3 million, that's minus $5.3 million, and one-time cost savings, which includes food, PD, some educational materials that we won't be buying next year, minus $1.1 million. So we increased 11.9, and we decreased 11.9, but we're still not really balanced because we had things that we didn't, we're not going to be able to afford with operating money, which was, we're going to ask for cash capital. So over to your left, the amount that we're going to ask for for operations and maintenance is $5.8 million. For safety, $3.6 million. For non-one-to-one technology, $600,000. In addition to that, we have a city request for cash capital during the CIP cycle to include an annual allotment of $2 million for replacement computers, and to continue our $2 million a year for bus replacements. Our next steps. On March 12th, we'll have a public hearing at 6:30, and we will ask the school board, excuse me, and then on March 19th, we will ask the school board to approve our budget. Anybody have questions?
All right, board members, do we have questions for our budget presentation?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Ammon.
Thank you for all of that information.
Thank you for, thank you for all of that information. And I don't know if this is something you have right now, but if you could get it to us. The reallocation of positions for the family engagement specialists and technology from reducing teaching positions, are those teaching positions that are currently filled?
No.
Okay. So would we be canceling courses that students are presently taking?
Nope, it won't, it's absolutely positions that have not been filled for several years.
Is that your only one? Okay. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The revenue projection for the federal money, I know it's tied to the kids, right? It's probably more of a human resource question. Since twenty sixteen, we've probably lost about average three hundred kids. Are those kids mostly in middle school or are they in high school? And when those kids leave, or the ones we have lost, have we lost them due to the federal employees or military personnel leaving the area? Or are we losing kids to other municipalities?
We've actually lost, I will have to look to see whether it's elementary or secondary, but we've actually lost a large number for less, right, for less enrolled military.
Right.
That's one of the categories that I saw on our chart today that showed a reduction based on people, just less enrollment in the military.
Okay.
To piggyback on, on that comment, I know sometimes it's our, our challenge getting the cards returned from families. What are we doing at this point to try to get a bigger push to get those cards back?
We are actually going back through every card to see who's missing and to try to find out why they're missing. We have till June thirtieth to reconcile.
Okay.
We just, just, for example, this week already, we've found twelve more. So we're just gonna keep plugging at it.
Plug it out.
At least get them to return the ones that are still appropriate.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Is that all, Mr. Harris?
Yeah, I think that's it.
Ms. Alger?
Yes, I have a question. In terms of the technology support specialists, can you explain their role and are they working with students?
They are not working with students, that's the instructional technology coach. The technology support specialists are the ones that help keep the computers online in the classrooms, swap out the computers when they're broken, that sort of thing. They're truly technicians, computer technicians.
And so the ten would give each school one person, is that?
We already had, we're going to have a total of forty-one when we add this additional ten. These currently are being funded in cares, we want to move them from cares into operating.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
So on, going back to, there's the previous slide where you have the salary comparisons with the other localities.
Okay.
And in there, you mentioned two years, new and, and two years behind. If you could just explain those.
Which one?
Those references, and it's on, this would be on slide twenty-seven. So one, one slide, yeah.
The one with teachers.
Yeah, the one with teachers.
Right, so what I was saying is, for zero years of experience, we're lower, like we're showing Norfolk and Hampton's salaries are more competitive than ours for that grouping. And if you look at bachelor's, you see where the yellow, where we are in yellow. Virginia Beach and Norfolk and Portsmouth and Hampton are all above us for starting pay.
I was actually referring to the, in parentheses, we have new and yet we have two years behind and four years behind on some of the.
Oh, that is probably trying to get the information from the entity. Nina, is that correct? Yeah, trying to get them to provide us their information in a timely fashion.
Okay, so that's, that's information, that's a salary that we have quoted from them as of two years ago.
Exactly.
Okay. And, thank you, that, that, that answers that question. And then, I guess just a comment going to slide, slide forty-nine, which is the operating budget by function.
Way down here.
And there, and there on this slide, just, yeah, so this slide here with instructional services, really just, mainly just curious to know what is, what seems to be eating more of that pie? Because comparing to last year, it was seventy-two percent, and I think prior to that, it was a little bit, a little bit higher. But I wouldn't, I'm not gonna say each year.
It's less than a percent.
But in the, in the most recent years, it's ticking down towards seventy, where it was, you know, it was, it used to be higher, you know, more towards seventy-five. So just, they are just curious to know.
I will definitely look into get the exact answer.
Other comments or questions from the board? Dr. Best?
Okay, and I'm not sure, cause I'm trying to, I was trying to listen and write a note to myself. But you said something about a bonus of one percent versus an increase.
Right.
And I think my question is the amounts of money. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Okay, so a bonus requires taxes for federal and state, but not the compensation comparison for your, your, I'm trying to figure out if that's what you say. Like your retirement, it doesn't affect your retirement percentage. Whereas, whereas if we give you a raise, we have to include taxes plus your retirement percentage. So that, you know, that's like sixteen percent versus eight point six five percent, there's a big difference.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to make one more comment to bounce off of Mr. Brown's comment. Because what I've noticed is that there is an increase for sure of the number or the percentage of students with special needs and also L students. I was just quickly calculating about a three percent increase over time for the special ed and the L is about a, about a five percent, six percent increase. So it's interesting that the instructional budget may have decreased slightly with the increase of students with special needs and, but that's covered by a different budget, correct? Right.
We have, we do have funding to cover.
And that's increasing. And that's increasing, I'm assuming.
That's what I was noticing on the slides there.
One thing about the English language students is the state has recognized that they're increasing in, in their area in particular, but the dollars are not following. So we have to get dollars from grants to help support that.
So, two things for me. One, knowing that, as you mentioned, that our populations that are increasing are, are English learners and then pre-K. I was specifically wondering how our budget is supporting that increase for pre-K. What are, and you might need to get back to me on the specifics on what are some, because that will be one of the questions that I think the community's gonna ask us about will be, what are we doing for the influx of pre-K students?
I will definitely get back to you on that.
Okay. And then the other one is, I didn't know what the acronym O P E B, O P E B for claims.
Other post benefits, is there a retiring benefits plan that's closed?
Oh, that's that one, okay.
The cost of those claims has actually gone down by three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's a good thing.
And those are by individuals who have already left our school division, those are the retirement, okay. So the one that, you know, I, I will be looking more at to our numbers will be the cost on medical that we're passing on to our employees, considering that we were able to do so much for raises and a bonus this past year, that maybe the medical will be where, you know, we might be able to see what we're, what we're planning to do there that will be helpful to them.
Okay.
Okay. Yes.
That's one, since you brought up benefits, the claim cost per member, is that claims that have been paid out, does that include members like H S A payments on a claim? Is it claims that have just been billed?
It's all claims for all members, even your family members.
Right. But is it what, is it what we have paid out, like under deductibles and coinsurance? Or is it also their part?
It's what we're paying out of the health fund, it's the school board portion.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions from the board? Thank you and your team for all the hard work. I know we will have further questions, but you have given us so much information, we really appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Minto.
So we will move on to item three point zero one, if there are comments by the superintendent, Dr. Mitchell.
I will keep them very brief, but I would like to thank Ms. Minto and her staff, as well as the employees who have given us input, board members and community. As anyone can see, managing a budget of this magnitude is a bit of a challenge. And we just appreciate the input, the insight, the tenacity of the team as they work through it and certainly want to acknowledge the hard work of our teachers and our, and our students. This really is about providing our students and our teachers with what they need in order to provide, provide our students with a quality education so that they can be successful. So again, we thank everybody who's had input and we do recognize that it is a bit of a challenge to manage a budget, a budget of this size, so thank you very much.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the agenda section on matters by the school board. I'm gonna ask that the board members keep up with me, I wanna go back and forth from my left and right today. So, Ms. Alger, you're up first.
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you to Dr. Mitchell for all of her hard work and all that she's done, especially working through this budget along with Scarlett. So thank you so much for everything that you've done, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
All right, I'm gonna echo similar comments. I'm gonna thank Dr. Mitchell and her team for putting together such a strong budget. I, of course, I'm gonna have more questions as we, as we move along and, and more considerations, but I, I really appreciate the effort and the work that has gone into this evening. And we, I believe we have a solid starting point to, to move forward with, with making the requests that are gonna be needed for our students.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Amon?
Sure, I will also say thank you for all of your hard work. You know, we're kind of, we've, we're coming out of a phase where there were a lot of programs, cares related funding, where funding wasn't as much, I mean, it's always a concern, that we had more to work with. And now we're getting into where, okay, we've gotten this, we've gotten the one-to-one computers, we've gotten, but now how do we maintain this? So that's gonna be a big challenge as to be taken to this new level. How do we, how do we maintain that? So I know it's, it's a lot of work, so I appreciate it.
Mr. Harris?
Okay, I guess I echo the same thing. Dr. Mitchell, thank you for all the hard work and your team. I can clearly say, obviously, the, for me, seeing a different type of leadership, I can actually feel a difference. And I know that may be difficult for some people to understand, but it's the small things that you see, the small, you know, the, the, the small things that you see, you notice that, that, that things like that is direct reflection of leadership. Things seem to be a little bit more steady and calm and, and precise, so thank you.
Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Madam School Board.
He was busy. I caught him way off guard.
Madam Chair, great things are happening in Newport News.
Indeed.
I'm gonna ditto, thank Dr. Superintendent for a job well done and her team and presenting a budget that was concise, understandable. And I believe that we're presenting something that the city can believe in and hopefully they will support as well. Thank you.
Dr. Best?
Okay, good evening, and I wanna ditto, ditto what everyone else said as far as the thank yous to Dr. Mitchell and her staff. For me, the budget is, well, it's getting, for me, it gets better every year. But when I first came on school board, it was very intimidating because it was just so much, I just did not know. And so each year, it has gotten better and better as far as explaining and breaking down and my understanding. So I feel like a student that's really making some progress. So you're doing what we're supposed to do in education, lifelong learners. And so this has been the best year so far, so I'm gonna go back and dig into it. But I do appreciate the hard work and, and making it very relatable for, for me and for, so I can talk with my constituents, thank you.
I'm gonna, well, I'm gonna echo specifically Mr. Harris's comment about the leadership and where we are and seeing where we're going. I mean, it is, it is said in the title, what is it, staying the course. And to me, that's what we need to be doing right now. We've been in through such a long time of having to be reactive that this budget really articulates itself as being proactive. It's nicely aligned with our strategic plan. It's kind of funny that it's, we're coming to the end of our strategic plan, but it is aligned with it. And I know, you know, board members up here really look for that to make sure that we are putting our money where our priorities are. So appreciate all of your hard work and do, I will ask for forgiveness now. We will have questions, but I know you're up for them and we appreciate all the hard work and the, and the time you spend with us to help us get the answers that we need. And we will be meeting with our counterparts. So some of the, some of the materials we've talked about previously, we'll be looking to be able to share those. And with that, I think I am adjourning this meeting.
I still have to go home.
Yes. Go home.
She's not even listening.